All right, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call to order today's Thursday, September 13th, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if you haven't done so already, please silence your cellphones, put it on vibrate if you can, sign in at the back of the room if you did not on your way in. There will be an opportunity during our public hearings for public comment if you want to offer comment, and there's, looks like, not a whole lot of folks here beyond applicants and their representatives for various items, but come on up to the podium, click the button on the microphone, which will turn the red light to green, and you'll be good to go. So first off, we have a proclamation to read. This is related to Suicide Prevention Week. Commissioner Jean Curtis will read the proclamation, and then we'll have a few words from our very own Susan Hay Patrick from the United Way.
Good afternoon. Whereas this proclamation recognizes suicide as a community-wide problem and suicide prevention as requiring a community effort, and whereas Montana's suicide rate is the highest in the nation and has ranked among the top five states with the highest rates of suicide for the past four decades, and whereas since 2015, Missoula County has suffered 114 suicides, and whereas suicide by firearm accounts for 51% of all suicides in the United States and 68% of all suicides in Missoula, and guns stored in the home are used for suicide 40 times more often than for self-defense, and whereas it is estimated that more than 5 million people in the U.S. are survivors of suicide, those who have lost loved ones to suicide, and in Montana, there are over 1,700 new survivors each year, and whereas our Montana, our community should support suicide prevention efforts to the maximum extent possible with initiatives like Project Tomorrow Montana, which works to reduce Missoula County suicide deaths and attempts through education programs and evidence-based policy. Now therefore, in coordination with the National Suicide Prevention Week, we, the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby recognize this week of September 7th to the 15th, 2018, as Suicide Prevention Week, and invite all citizens to join in recognizing suicide as a community-wide problem and suicide prevention as requiring a community effort. Signed by the Commissioners.
Thank you. Susan, do you want to come on up?
Thank you all very much for recognizing that suicide represents a public health crisis in our county, our city, our state, and our country, and a proclamation like this is important because it shows that you want to be part of the solution. Suicide is one of the most difficult issues to talk about, but we can't fix things we can't talk about, and elevating the observance of National Suicide Prevention Week to a proclamation at our county level is really important because it does shine a light on this issue. We have a number of activities that are continuing during National Suicide Prevention Week in Missoula tonight. NAMI, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, has an open-mic format at The Roxy where local writers will be telling their own stories of hope and resilience. Tomorrow night, David Simmons, former Missoula resident, son of Don and Pat, and brother of J.K., our own Oscar-winning J.K. Simmons, will be performing with his band, and Willard Students, he's doing a three-day workshop with Willard Students, helping them tell their stories of despair and hope and resilience. And then, of course, Saturday is the Out of the Darkness Walk for National Suicide Prevention Week at Silver Park, where teams walk in honor and memory of those that they have lost to suicide. It is, as I said, a public health crisis. We know that suicide is the most preventable form of death. It takes reaching out, it takes connecting, it takes talking about the problem. So thank you for your concern and your efforts. I don't have many more opportunities in this format to thank Jean for her leadership on this and other public health issues for so many years, but deeply, deeply grateful. So we say at Project Tomorrow Montana that preventing suicide is everybody's business, so on behalf of Project Tomorrow, thank you for making it your business and the county's business.
Thank you, Susan, and I have the official proclamation for you. Super important topic, so thanks to Susan and the United Way and all other partners in the community to help address this systemic issue that we're facing. Other announcements on, from staff or the Commission? Just so folks know, at least Monday through Wednesday of next week, we will largely be tied up with the Montana Association of Counties Conference, which will be down at the Holiday Inn. Missoula County is the host county for this year's conference. So we have two public hearings today, which you'll see on your agenda. You'll have an opportunity to comment on items related to those at that time. Is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, our current claims list, and this would be for claims to Missoula County from August 16th, September 5th, 2018, total $3,318,673.48. We have two public hearings. Like I say, there will be an opportunity for staff presentation, for comments from the applicants or their representative, and then opportunity for additional public comment if there is any, and so we will begin by opening a public hearing on the proposed One Mile Ranch subdivision. Casey?
Casey Drayton, planner for CAPS, here to present the staff report for the One Mile Ranch subdivision. The applicant for the subdivision is Robert Alexander, represented by Territorial Land Works. The location of the subdivision is out near Frenchtown. We're located just to the northwest of the Frenchtown Interstate 90 interchange out there. The parcel is highlighted in blue on the screen for you here today. Currently, we're looking at just over 28 acres of property for this subdivision. You can see that a few lots have been split off of the original tract, or one of the original tracts here through a family transfer request. Adjacent to the east side, we have the Frenchtown School District property. To the north, we have kind of a rural agricultural residential development that the applicant also owns and resides in, I believe. The site, as mentioned, is vacant. It's historically been used for agricultural purposes. That's primarily alfalfa production on all but a few acres located off on the east side, just north of the school district parking lot. Here's a few photos just to show you what it looks like out there on the site. You can see there are some irrigation components laying there next to the existing driveway. This is the driveway that runs up to the existing home site just to the north. It's been labeled as Alexander Road. So currently, it's a gravel road that comes off the Frenchtown Frontage Road. You can see in the picture to the right, they've just recently completed the reconstruction of the pedestrian trail as well as the road there, so they're finishing up that work now. And then the rest of the site, alfalfa, hay production, and just a mix of grasses that are out there currently. Proposed today is a minor subdivision request. It would be known as the One Mile Ranch subdivision, which is a five-lot subdivision, which consists of four residential-type home sites located along the Frenchtown School District property at the southeast corner of the subdivision. That would then leave a 22 and 1/2 approximately acre tract that would be left in agricultural use at this point in time. Along with the subdivision, the applicant's proposing to pave Alexander Road up to the last access point for Lot 4. You can see that terminating in a cul-de-sac roughly in the center of the property here as shown on the screen. Looking at the review criteria for the subdivision, first off, zoning and growth policy compliance. This property is unzoned within Missoula County. The property is located within the Frenchtown Activity Center. When we look at the comprehensive plan, land use designation, this property is designated as open and resource, but it's also within the Activity Center. The Activity Center goes on to suggest that for development to occur in the Frenchtown area, it should be located within that area. When you look at the Frenchtown Activity Center as a whole, a good portion of it lies within designated floodplain areas to the south of Frenchtown. A lot of the land to the north of Frenchtown is pretty heavily timbered, steep slopes, so it really restricts development areas down to the primary corridor along the Frenchtown Frontage Road, Interstate 90, and then the original Frenchtown Town Site. So staff feels that this is an appropriate area for residential development to exceed some of the open and resource plan indications. The Activity Center recommends development up to two dwelling units per acre. In this case, we're well below that with 28 acres and only essentially five lots here, or five home sites being proposed, really only four if the fifth lot does maintain its agricultural use currently. So staff has found that the subdivision complies with the overall comprehensive plan, land use recommendations, and the Missoula County growth policy. Looking at the ag and ag water user facilities aspects, the property is mapped as prime farmland if irrigated soils. TLI completed some soil profiles on the sub, on the location of the subdivision previously. It was found to be consistent with NRCS mapping, that these are prime soils located on this property viable for agricultural use, which has historically been done here. Water is available to the subdivision from the Frenchtown Irrigation District ditch. The main ditch is shown here on this map, running sort of along where the grade starts to rise up to the north on the hillside. There is a lateral to the ditch that runs in closer proximity, which is theoretically where you would pull water from for this subdivision through a 20-foot easement that connects up to it, and that is an existing easement. Seeing that the applicant is proposing to leave, the majority of the property in agricultural use, staff has found that, for the most part, it does a pretty good job of mitigating agricultural impacts. However, there are a few conditions recommended to further promote the agricultural use on the property, one of those being creating an irrigation plan so that any future lot owners do have access to that irrigation water. Another one being restricting the home site on Lot 5, so that's the 22 and 1/2 acre lot, to a location that would be consistent with the other residential development on the property, so that'd be within 300 feet of Alexander Road, so located approximately where I'm showing with the mouse on the screen right now, or within 300 feet of Roman Creek Road, so either to the north of the lots created through family transfer or just to the south of them. What that would do is keep all your residential development fairly tight and compact and leave a large contiguous area open for agricultural use with the subdivision request. Looking at local services, as I mentioned, the applicant's proposed a new 24-foot wide paved road to come in and access the four lots within the subdivision. You can see sort of a preliminary layout here with driveways and proposed home sites showing. Access comes off the Frenchtown Frontage Road. That's Montana Department of Transportation reviewing that approach there. There is the possibility that Lot 5 could access off Roman Creek Road. That would be an approach permit approved by Missoula County Public Works, so in either case, there is adequate access to all of the properties within the subdivision. In addition to roads along the lines of local services, pedestrian facilities are available to the subdivision via the Frenchtown Frontage Road. There's no additional extension of pedestrian facilities required or proposed here. However, that trail, excuse me, will make that long connection all the way back to the Y area when it's completed, and also closer to the Frenchtown School perhaps for any children in the subdivision to have a nice access over there. There is a pedestrian trail along Roman Creek Road on the opposite side of the road from the subdivision, but that could provide further connection to a future property owner for Lot 5 as well. The water and sanitation systems for the subdivision are proposed as individual systems, so we're going to have individual wells proposed on lots 1 through 4. These would be exempt wells, each one having its own. They're showing on this proposal here on the screen with the appropriate well-isolation zone easements, and then each individual lot will have its own drain field. Those are also shown on this preliminary layout here. Staff has found that the proposal complies with all the water and sanitation requirements. Solid waste will be taken care of by Republic Services. No parkland dedication is proposed or required with this minor subdivision request. Properties in the Frenchtown School District were obviously in very close proximity to at least the high school there. We don't anticipate any negative impacts to the school from the, these four residential lots, or potentially five if it does host residential use. Properties within the Frenchtown Rural Fire District, fire hazard assessment was completed. The subdivision is returned to moderate hazard ranking here. We do have a condition that a statement be included in the covenants to notify homeowners that they are in a moderate hazard risk area for wildfire. Subdivision regulations require a water supply for fire suppression. In this case, the developer has chosen residential fire sprinklers as the chosen route to go there, so there's some condition language related to those residential fire sprinkler requirements. The Missoula County Fire Inspector did comment that the subdivision's provided sufficient consideration to public health and safety from a fire perspective and for fire suppression and emergency access. Looking at wildlife and wildlife habitat and the natural environment, staff has found that the subdivision does not have any slopes in excess of 25% grade. It's relatively flat. The vegetation on the property is mainly for agricultural use, and we're not located adjacent to any public lands, so there's no major concerns from that standpoint. Given the moderately developed area and close transportation corridors, we don't find that there's any necessary species of concern to be worried about with this subdivision. The development covenants do include notification to property owners of living adjacent to wildlife should there be any wildlife that comes to frequent the subdivision. Some standard conditions have been added and notifications on noxious weed management to this subdivision, fairly common with other subdivision requests. Looking at public health and safety concerns, the subdivision does not contain any FEMA-mapped floodplain. The subdivision is down gradient of the Frenchtown Irrigation Canal. It has been noted by the Missoula County Floodplain Administrator, who's here with us today, that there could be a risk to homes within this subdivision from a breaching of that ditch. I will jump back up quickly here just to show you. That main ditch, like I said, runs along the back of the hillside. Everything down sort of between Interstate 90 and that ditch could be at potential risk should that, the water in that ditch ever breach out of there. And we do have a condition related to that that I'll get to here in just a second. The groundwater on the site was found to be between 8 and 14 feet below the surface, depending on the time of the year. Seeing that the groundwater comes within 8 feet, which is in range of basements, as well as the potential for flooding, staff has recommended a condition to prohibit basements within the subdivision. The language that would need to be included in the covenants and on the final plat is included in the conditions of approval, and that basically spells out that basements are prohibited, and it's due to groundwater as well as being down gradient of that irrigation In addition to that, we find that the subdivision's complied with survey requirements, subdivision regulations, and review procedures. It's provided necessary provisions, easements for utilities, and it provides legal and physical access. Jump down. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the One Mile Ranch subdivision, subject to the conditions found in the staff report. Just a few notes here. I've included conditions number 5, 9, 10, 11, and 13 on the screen after the briefing on Monday morning and further discussions with the applicant and representative. We have gone over these in a little more detail. These seem to be the ones that the applicant was concerned with right off the bat, so I've included them here. We did talk over, in a subsequent meeting, a few modifications to these conditions that I believe the applicant has consented to and would appreciate some changes made. They may appreciate some changes beyond this as well, and I'll let them speak to that. One of the condition amendments that we talked about was changing it to, instead of restricting or prohibiting basements, it would be a notification in the covenants and on the plat to notify homeowners that they should consult with appropriate engineering professionals to identify the site-specific risks related to basements prior to construction. That would give the homeowner the duty to figure out what risks are there instead of just outright prohibiting them. So that's an alternative condition. Staff would still like to see that basements be prohibited, seeing that there could be a potential risk to these property owners here, and Todd will speak to that in a little bit more detail if you'd like. And in addition to that, the applicant met with staff and talked pretty in-depth about condition number 11, which has to do with the irrigation plan. 10 and 11 go together, kind of hand-in-hand. 10 is an irrigation plan. 11 is the execution of that plan as a condition of approval. When we looked back into the subdivision regulations, we found that there is a provision that if the irrigation provider consents to it, the applicant could construct those irrigation improvements on an alternative schedule so that they wouldn't have to be done prior to final plat approval. The applicant feels that they could provide better irrigation facilities, getting more landowners on board, so waiting until more property owners come into play and seeing just how the agricultural use there might play out. Once that happens, then they might have appropriate funding, and that would be identified through the irrigation plan required in condition number 10 to set up a pretty adequate irrigation system for the properties in this area, and that wouldn't necessarily just be for the subdivision. That could also encompass outside properties. I think there's been some interest in other landowners in the area as well of getting an inappropriate pump in irrigation facilities to pull water from the ditch. The other conditions that we talked about, condition number nine has to do with the siting of the home on Lot 5. Staff mentioned the reasoning behind that condition of keeping residential development fairly tight together. The applicant has requested a few different things here, and I think they just wanted to open it up to a little more flexibility to allow a home within 300 feet of either the Frenchtown Frontage Road, Alexander Road, or Roman Creek Road. That would give them a little bit bigger building envelope option. And then they've also expressed some concern about the no-access strip identified in condition number 13. Staff's recommended that along the Frenchtown Frontage Road to restrict all driveways and access to this new Alexander Road or Roman Creek Road, the roads of lesser classification. That goes along with the subdivision regulations. We didn't receive comment from MDT expressing that that needed to be there for any stated purpose, so we're not sure where MDT stands in terms of additional approach permits along the Frontage Road. They would have to go through the proper review procedure through MDT to ever allow more approaches there. However, staff just thought it would cover it nicely just to keep all traffic associated with this five-lot minor subdivision to Alexander Road or Roman Creek Road. That concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you. With the applicant, our applicant's representative, like to say a few words?
For the record, my name's Andy Short. I represent Territorial Land Works. We are surveyors, engineers, and land use consultants. I'm a land use consultant. I help people take their property, develop their property. Casey, thanks for the staff report. Wonderful working with you. Time gets kind of compressed in these, and you're more than helpful to meet with us. I really appreciate it. And thanks for the Commission for having that Monday meeting where we can kind of talk about things, and I apologize if I, if it went a little long. So just a few highlights. You know, Buzz has been on this property for 33 years. You know, he lives directly north of the, of the project, and you know, that's the, that house is the, I believe it's the oldest permanent structure in Frenchtown, in the Frenchtown Valley, which is kind of an interesting side note from a planning perspective. Yeah, and just to hit that the Missour County Regional Land Use Guide adopted by the BCC in 2002 addresses the Frenchtown Activity Circle, and it states that this is where any new development should go. It's located a mile northwest of the Frenchtown, Frenchtown Town Center. It's on a state-maintained road, and Frenchtown State Park is almost adjacent to the property. The proximity to these services, infrastructure, and public lands makes it kind of ideal for And just to discuss those conditions, Casey, thanks for your work on that again. Yeah, we, number five, having a situation where the homers can consult with appropriate engineering professionals to identify the specific risks. Buzz is more than happy with that. Placing the, and I just want to reiterate on number nine, that yeah, that that's just restricting residential use. You know, this is a parcel that's over 20 acres, so you, you don't necessarily have to designate sanitation facilities, so if it was commercial, that it's not restricting commercial use. I, you know, my thought was that it's right on the Frontage Road. There's a possibility that someone could come and buy Lot 5 and do something interesting there that's, since it is on the Frontage Road. And the, the change to the irrigation plan, yeah, having written consent from the district to have an alternative schedule is, is very helpful because, yeah, Buzz wants to do something very specific for this, and it doesn't quite make sense for, for lots, and more users would be appropriate for the kind of system he wants, you know, ultimately wants to do. And then the no-access strip, I think, yeah, we're completely fine with that. I think, yeah, any access is going to come from those, those other, other routes. With that, I was wondering if you had any questions for me before Buzz was going to come up and say a few words as well?
Uh, no. Come on up, and we'll then see what questions the Commission might have, so thank you. Come on up.
Is this on?
Is it on?
Yep. It's on. I'm Buzz Alexander. I know the first screen said Robert. I, when somebody addresses me as Robert, I usually turn around and look for Robert because my, when I was a year old, I had a little buzzy bee toy, and that's where I, I've been buzzed for 70 years. I, I have lived on the property, my family's on the property forever. I just want to make a nice subdivision and have some nice neighbors. I, I appreciate working with the folks, and if you've got any, any specific questions for me, I'd be happy to handle them.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else in our thin audience today want to comment on this proposed subdivision? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and questions from the Commission? And do you want to hear from Todd?
Well, I didn't know if Todd wanted to speak, or just if we had questions, or...
Okay.
I think it would be good on the record to have Todd talk about whether, with the engineer being involved with the potential of flooding, if that alleviates some of your concerns.
Come on up, Todd, and yeah, if you want to speak to the proposed amended language, that would be great.
Todd Kleats, Missoula County Floodplain Administrator. I think the, the way that's written, where it advises a potential owner to consult with an engineer, I don't know that, I mean, that's, that's good information, but I don't know how we would then be able to address that as, as part of any kind of development. Would we then say if somebody wanted a basement, you need to provide us a letter from an engineer saying that you're not going to have any issues, or, or is it just a blanket, you need to consult with an engineer, and then the county just kind of washes their hands of it? That's the concern that I would have, is what exactly are we trying to get out of that?
Cola?
Would it be appropriate to add something that at the time of building permit, they would have to have something from an engineer if they were going to build a basement? Or where would that fall in the process if that was a route we were willing to go?
Yeah, I think that would be, be appropriate to have a engineered-certified plan come in that would address any potential ground, groundwater implications, and also flooding, potential flooding from a irrigation canal.
Do you feel that would address your concerns, or you...
I think that would address a lot of the, a lot of the concern for that. Again, just, just to... I think that would address a lot of the concern for that. Again, just to reiterate that there, I don't think that anyone's really questioning whether or not there can be inundation that comes from the ditch through rodent hazards or potential groundwater. We've got some slides and some information that we could share if that's needed down the road.
Thank you. Andy or Buzz, does that make sense to you in terms of providing some documentation at the time of building permit?
By documentation, you mean the builder has an engineer sign off?
I think that's basically...
Yeah, if they were going to build a basement, they would have to have an engineer do the appropriate studies for the risks of flooding in order to build that basement at the time of building permit. They would have to submit that from that engineer.
Yeah, I think that's the intent. Andy, do you want to come on up if you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, and just, I think Buzz is completely happy with that. I think just to add to it, so we're required to groundwater monitor within 25 feet of the drain field locations. And so we'll have pretty site-specific information. I mean, it's, you know, 2008, when this was a part of a much bigger project, we did a hydrogeologic study of this, you know, so we know the direction of groundwater. We know generally how what it does as the season changes and the ditch comes on. So we will have site-specific information where we could give the builder, you know, Buzz could give the builder, say, hey, we groundwater monitored, and it was, you know, 7.5 feet, or... So the, you know, I don't know if the engineer's belt and suspenders scenario where we could give that to the engineer, and then they would make their recommend, maybe it's a simple letter recommendation from that. But just FYI, we've got site-specific information.
Have you done any work on the risk of the ditch breaching?
Only, only just my research. And, you know, I've known Todd for, I don't know, 14 years, and I respect his opinion certainly. And, you know, the ditch could definitely breach, and it could flood. You know, I think the, is it fern, fern, fernly, I believe those, it was a very dense development, you know, I think it was like four per acre, and it was directly abutting the ditch. And I believe that's where it flooded. This, you know, this is a different scenario. There's a large swale that's between, it's very far from the ditch. There's a large swale that's away from there. But I'm certainly, I think certainly telling people that there is a risk is important. You know, there's nothing really that an engineer is going to sign off, and it says that it's, you know, if the ditch breaches, they're going to, the basements aren't going to flood.
I think that's our concern, though, because I was trying to figure out, so if we added another sentence that says building plans include a basement, they'll need an engineer's stamp or something. But nowhere in here do we say that anybody needs to model that ditch breach. So you're going to have the groundwater stuff for them to look at, but somebody needs to model that if they want to show that, you know, if you read the whole condition, it's talking about the ditch. So if you're going to show the house isn't going to be inundated, and just so you know, I mean, county's been sued before because of flooding because somebody didn't do something. So that's why we just make sure that there's adequate warning but adequate study so that we don't have somebody's basement full, and then they come and say, well, why did you do that, you dumb county? So...
Casey, do you have some...
Yeah, I was just going to add a quick note here that there's a few different levels that this condition could go. Staff recommended it sort of at the most restrictive, highest tier of just prohibiting basements. You could come down to kind of a mid-tier, which is what we've recommended. That's just a notification to homeowners that they should consult with the engineers and get as much information out of the engineers as they feel comfortable with or need to get to if they want to put a basement in. You could completely scratch the condition and go at the bare bottom. Or what you're proposing is something sort of in-between what staff had originally and what staff's amended condition was here. The problem I foresee with that is we don't really specify what kind of a study, we don't know what a study would look like even for the ditch breach necessarily. Maybe Todd could add a little bit to that. But we're also then in a position where what are we really getting from this engineer? If an engineer just says, hey, I'm an engineer, you can build a basement, do we accept that? It puts us in a tough situation at time of building permit where we don't really know exactly what we're looking for.
Maybe they'll sue the engineer instead of us.
Well, you know, it's, yeah, we'd have an engineer certifying something, but it's just what are they certifying, whether it's groundwater or flooding? We have two issues really tied to this condition, so that also makes it kind of tricky.
Mr. Alexander, do you have something you wanted to add, too?
And before Buzz goes, one real quick thing, Gene. So whenever we've done projects in the past, and there's a flood inundation area from a, right, it's below a dam. And so there's some risk that the dam will break. And what we've done in the past, and it's been acceptable, is that we just have a note on the plat that says, hey, this is in the dam flood inundation area.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I just wanted to describe the ditch. It's about 10 feet wide, about here and there, about two feet deep. And right next to it, on my side of the ditch, is a 20-foot-wide, 12-foot-deep borrow pit where they took the earth to build the ditch. So even if I dynamited the ditch, if the water's going in the borrow pit, it would take a day or two, maybe for somebody to notice. I mean, it might be the kind of thing where a photograph or two would... I did a little research on the canal. They called it rather than a ditch that happened in Nevada, and you had pictures of people a day after it happened with water up to the halfway up, the tires in the cars. I mean, it looks like New Orleans in a hurricane. And that just isn't possible. The other thing is, if there is any kind of breach in that ditch, it gets turned off pretty quickly.
Cola?
Todd, do you have available some of the pictures of when there was a breach in 91 or something like that, wasn't it, that you sent us? Maybe I'm thinking of the prison riot.
Yeah, right.
That was in 91, right?
This is just a few of the slides I have put together. Of course, it's not in the floodplain. We did have, in 1997, we had the Clark, it was a high-water year, it was a 25-year event on the Clark Fork, and that was flown during flooding. And you can see, I think that's the borrow ditch that Buzz was talking about, having surface water in it. And that would be as the eastern, how do I get the mouse to show? Oh, doesn't work with this. But you can see the water flowing through the eastern portion and through the center of the lot. And the most northern lot that is being proposed for the small acreage is right at the edge of that, right at the edge of that swale. This was from a report that was done by the Bureau of Reclamation quite a bit further east of this particular location. It's east of the school, just right where the canal comes under the Frontage Road and the interstate. That new residential houses have been built in the down slope area between the canal, just downstream of the I-90 Frontage Road crossing. These houses would be inundated if the canal breaks at this location. Great many rodent holes, burrows were observed in the inner, outer, and embankment along this reach. Again, that was done by the Bureau of Reclamation. They had some recommendations that were, we had a subdivision called the Lucier Edition that had some conditions for elevating the homes that were built there, the townhomes that were being built there, to be two feet above, grade with pre- and post-construction elevation certificates, and an additional flood control swale should that irrigation canal breach. We're not recommending that here, just again, the basement concern. Again, this is upstream. You can see, or up gradient east, you can see some of the rodent holes there in that location of the ditch, excuse me, canal at that location. This is from the history of the Frenchtown Canal, and it talks a little bit about, by the 1940s, operation of the Frenchtown Project grew less troublesome, except for the average meddlesome rodent burrowing into earthworks. A few pocket gophers and muskrats were responsible for some canal breaks, with one in 1961 requiring shutdown of the main canal for a week. Frenchtown irrigation tried trapping, poisoning, and other methods to eradicate the rodents, but most methods proved only temporarily successful. And this is just that story that Buzz was just mentioning with the people in the boats. It was the very similar type of situation, much bigger canal down there, the Truckee Canal Irrigation District, but also built by the Bureau of Reclamation. And what happened there, of course, it was a 40-foot breach in the middle of the night, and about 600 homes were impacted by the water. If the canal breached here, from where it crosses underneath the interstate all the way down to the Hueson exit, we maybe have 275 homes now. But again, we don't have the volume of water that we have there, but it's how deep and how fast and where the water would go at this point, we just don't know. But what happened there was with that flooding that happened, the Truckee Irrigation District got sued 18 million. City and county there settled for about 6 million. And again, what they brought up in their litigation was that the plaintiffs presented evidence demonstrating the embankment failure occurred due to numerous rodent burrows in the Truckee Canal Embankment. And they also provided evidence indicating the Truckee Irrigation District was repeatedly alerted that significant repairs needed to be done to the canal embankment, including repairing rodent holes, but did not take action. So it's just, it's a concern. The Frenchtown Irrigation District does have a, does have a history of rodent burrows with failures in the past. I don't know if Buzz remembers what happened in 1961, or what happened in 1997 to have that water there right behind the project. But again, that's why the prohibition of basements is what we initially recommended.
So Todd, given the lower volume of water in the Frenchtown Canal, and coupled with the fact that there is this swale feature out there, I guess, short of any in-depth analysis or modeling, it's hard to know precisely what the effect of a prolonged breach would be. But presumably, I mean, I don't know, I'm guessing it would be significantly less than the example that you've shown there from Nevada. But other questions from the commission? So I guess right now, the language is kind of informational. That would be, an engineer would take a look at someone's property prior to building permit being issued. They would give some sort of an assessment of groundwater, perhaps. They would look at inundation from a breach of the canal. If we did go the route of kind of splitting the difference between original staff proposal and what is currently proposed as amended to require something be provided back to the county at the time of building permit, I mean, what then, I guess, is the question. Could the engineer say, yeah, it looks like someone's basement would be flooded based on some level of analysis, and we would not issue the building permit? I guess it's just not clear to me exactly how in practice this would play out. Casey?
Yeah, I can just add that it's not necessarily clear to us either, which is why we've laid out really two options here, and that's prohibition of basements, or the alternative of you're notifying homeowners, whether they want to take our word for it or not is up to them. Certainly, the better solution in staff size is just to prohibit the basements. It takes the risk out of the equation totally, and, you know, keeps everybody high and dry. An alternative where we could get something firm, maybe that, we could say that basements are prohibited until such time as an engineer certifies that the whole subdivision is out of risk of a flooding event from the canal, and that all groundwater doesn't come within X feet, you know, of the surface, and basements can go that deep. But, you know, we start getting into, I don't know, what a flood study on an irrigation canal would look like. It depends on where the breach happens and elevations, and, you know, with, we're constructing a road out here, does that change things? And, you know, looking at the before and after, I just, I don't know how that would play out on the ground.
Or if nobody notices for a week that it's breached, and then the water, I mean, it...
Well, and I think the applicant said that the groundwater rises and falls with the ditch. So if all that water moves even closer, does the groundwater come even higher then and render all groundwater studies useless? Because where the groundwater's coming from, the location is now changed. So really, the safer route would be the prohibition of basements as originally recommended, or just a blanket notification to homeowners that there's risk here, and, you know, beware of those risks.
Cola?
I don't generally like being overly prescriptive with things, but I also know, as we've had a lot of flooding, I mean, really, we like to say buyers beware. And if we put it out there and people have that knowledge, then it's on them. But we all know that in practice, that doesn't work. And people always come back at us and say, why did you let people do this? And so if there's no logistical way to work it out, that it, and you're right, I see, you're making great points. You know, it's logistically difficult to make this work in any between sort of manner. And so I don't like it, but I'm leaning towards prohibiting basements.
Well, certainly Orchard Homes is sticking in my mind right now, a different scenario. But I was out there as recently as last week, and folks who maybe should have known, I don't know, are there and have suffered impacts from flooding. And we, as Missoula County, are the, kind of the target of their ire. Okay, thank you, Casey. So do we want to discuss this further, or move on to some of the other conditions and ask questions?
Can we put Casey's slide back up?
Of the subdivision?
Conditions one?
Oh, yeah. Okay, bring that on. Okay, any other questions about, I guess, either these conditions on the screen or anything Well, while folks are looking at that and thinking about it, a question I asked Casey yesterday, or maybe it was first thing this morning, was on some of these, actually quite a few of the subdivision proposals that we see where there are covenants. One covenant that sometimes is included relates to dark skies. And I didn't see anything like that here. And this just relates to light pollution and cutting down impacts on the community and neighborhood from excess light. Casey, do you have anything with you that would, if we so chose to, oh, how handy it is. Okay.
So just to explain, what you're seeing on the screen would be a sample condition to require, at bare bones, just a full cutoff light fixture, which would be kind of the premise of dark sky compliant fixtures. The language below actually came out of, the most recent example I could find was Spurgeon Ranch. The applicant had proposed the language that you see in quotes there. That was a project by territorial, so I hope they don't mind me putting it up on the screen here. But that was out of those draft covenants that they had there, which I felt was a pretty good example of what it would look like. In that case, it was proposed by the applicant. So if you're looking to a condition here today, similar to something up at the top, or something even more in-depth than that, just make sure that we, you know, address, you know, what kind of impacts lighting may have to surrounding development, public health and safety, maybe. You know, I don't know where you were trying to take it, but just keep that in mind.
Yeah, it would be, I guess I was thinking along the lines of similar findings of fact that we've seen elsewhere, be it Spurgeon or otherwise, that would tie into, would it actually be a condition or just an amended covenant?
If you're looking to require it, it would be a condition of approval to amend the covenants.
I see.
Yeah. And, you know, I've looked at a few others, and there were some comments from neighbors in one other case that I looked at, that, you know, they wanted to see this happen, and, you know, we're lacking that here. We didn't receive any comments or concerns. We haven't really heard what the issue may be with, you know, just lighting as homeowners wish to do it.
I think it would be more based on prior experience and preemptive. Andy or Buzz, do you have any thoughts on something along these lines? Andy or Buzz, do you have any thoughts on something along these lines?
Yeah, that's something that we normally include, and it was probably just a...
Okay.
So just to be clear, though, our regulations do not require this, right?
No, that'd be, you know, more along the lines of like a home design standard almost, so it's not required under the regulations.
So if it's not required, could we even condition it as such, short of the applicant of their own accord?
Well, you'd have to make that connection back to the subdivision specifically, and, you know, is there an impact here from full lighting? You know, was there some reasoning behind it? You know, I, thinking about it, you know, we do have the Frenchtown High School in close proximity, the ball fields, I think they have lights on them as far as I know, and the parking lot probably does as well, which are going to well overpower anything we're going to get out of residential development. So, you know, it's not impossible to meet dark sky compliant fixtures, it's just your fixture choice, basically no floodlights. So I don't think it's a huge deal to get to, but, you know, finding that there's some, you know, relation to impacts of the subdivision, is it going to negatively affect wildlife or adjacent property owners or anything like that?
Cola?
I don't see a strong nexus for requiring it in this situation. I know we have done it in some areas where there's commercial in some residential and one concerned about retaining the character of that neighborhood or wildlife or things like that. But I think this lacks like a clear nexus for why we would do this or require it when it's not in the regulations. And I also think dark skies is more of a community conversation and a neighborhood conversation about whether there's interest in different tools to implement dark skies on a larger scale than just subdivision by subdivision, and requiring it of subdivision, certain subdivisions and not others, I think is somewhat arbitrary sometimes. So I like the idea, but I don't feel comfortable requiring it in this case.
I agree with Cola. Our regulations don't require, we don't have anything to do this, but it sounds like it's something that the homeowner or the landowner himself might add anyway, but I don't see any reason for us to add it since it's not in our regulations and nobody in the neighborhood made that nexus. I too agree that it's nice, although I like the streetlights in my neighborhood.
Okay, I might be in the minority here, but I guess it would be out of your own accord if you wanted to amend your covenants to include something like this or if at this juncture, you don't have any interest in that.
Andy, could you make sure you're talking on the mic?
Andy, do you want to come on up to the mic, please?
She gets to type all the things we say.
I apologize. Yeah, and we're going to be definitely fine-tooth comb with the covenants as moving forward. Just, you know, you put together a draft and then you hope to meet all the conditions, and then when you're serious, you're like, okay, this is happening, let's make sure we got everything we hear and we want, and this is no problem. It's actually, yeah, I typically like it, so.
Okay, thank you. You want to toggle back, Casey, to the list? Okay.
So I think that I support the number five as shown in the amendments on the screen. It makes folks aware of it in this particular case, especially after seeing in 1997 that the water actually was retained in that swale. I think that that provides some security. This isn't a huge ditch, it's not really close, so I think that this is adequate in this case. And then the same with the amendment to number 11. I think that that provides what's needed and allows them to design a delivery system that works with enough folks to make it pencil out.
Okay, any other questions? I guess we are ready for motions if folks want to make any motions to amend staff conditions.
I would move to amend condition number five to just amend the last paragraph, so it would read, "Due to the risk of water inundation of subsurface improvements resulting from high groundwater and location down gradient..." I don't think it's supposed to say of, to, just of, "The Frenchtown Irrigation Canal, strike the existing basements are prohibited within the subdivision and add homeowners should consult with the appropriate engineering professionals to identify site-specific risks related to basements prior to construction."
I'll second that. Is there discussion on the motion? Yes, I guess I feel somewhat ambivalent on this because on the one hand, conditions are such that maybe the swale would, and what we're... And Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but the photo that you showed, why don't you come on up to the microphone just briefly? The photo that you showed from the historic photo with water in the swale, that was not from a breaching of the canal, correct?
I don't believe that to be the case, no.
Buzz, do you read all?
I think that was inferred into the subject.
No, I'm sorry, the...
The Frenchtown, the photo of your property with water in the canal that was shown, we're pulling it up right now.
Swale.
In the swale. The black and white.
Okay, if he could come forward so he's on the mic.
Come on up, Buzz, if you could. Sorry to keep you hopping up and down. So the water that's displayed in the photo there is from what?
In my 33 years...
Buzz, would you mind coming over to the mic? Sorry.
In my 33 years of living on the property, the only time I've ever seen water in that swale is when I put it there. And I tried to build my own ditch from over by the high school 30 years ago, a novice from Washington State knowing nothing about this, and I learned all about gophers. And what happens is all the water I put in the ditch went down to the swale. But that water started up over by the high school. In the meantime, the high school has filled all that in. It's right next to the football field, and they filled in 10 or 12 feet of earth. In the meantime, after I gave up on that ditch and plowed it flat again, there hasn't been any water in there before then. I have no idea. That's about a, oh boy, about 100-foot wide by six or seven-foot-deep swale, so we're talking 50 feet that way up to grade, 50 feet that way up to grade, and then seven feet deep. And groundwater, if groundwater is a dozen feet from most of the properties here, then it's probably five feet from the bottom of that swale, and I've never seen the groundwater come up to the earth level in that swale.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Like I say, I feel somewhat ambivalent about this. Clearly, the conditions on the ground here are somewhat different than what we saw in the catastrophic breaching of the canal in Nevada. But I think we're also stinging from other situations where we've been, like I say, in the crosshairs of folks who are blaming us for their flooding. Cola?
I think I feel the same way. I could go, it's difficult because we can't quantify the risk, we don't have quantification of the risk, and so we have to look at a picture and say, well, that doesn't look like there's much risk, but, you know, do you go with the philosophy of better safe than sorry? Or do you say there doesn't appear to be much risk and hope that there isn't and warn people that there might be? So I feel the same as you.
Okay, I am tipping slightly towards the amended language on the screen, so if there's any more deliberations, chime in. Otherwise, let's go ahead and vote all those in favor of the language as amended for condition five. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Any additional amendments?
I would move to amend condition number 11 to read, "The plans for and construction of all necessary irrigation facilities shall be reviewed and approved by the Frenchtown Irrigation District and CAPS prior to the final plat approval, or the Frenchtown Irrigation District shall provide written confirmation approving of an alternative schedule for the delivery of water to the lots."
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Aye.
And then I would move that the One Mile Ranch subdivision be approved based on finding, in fact, the staff report, subject to the recommended conditions as amended today.
Second.
Further discussion? I guess two things. One, so Casey, will the findings of fact, any that need to be changed, I'm assuming will be changed to reflect the amended conditions?
Yeah, I'll certainly go through those and capture the testimony here today from Todd, the applicant, your deliberations as well.
And just a general commentary on planning. I hope as we think about updating our zoning in Missoula County that we'll be rethinking these activity centers, because frankly, I find them somewhat at odds at times and confusing in terms of sorting out the activity center versus the underlying land use designations in areas that are not zoned. And it's not the first time we've run into this. Any further discussion? Okay, we've had a motion, a second discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay, it carries. Thank you.
And Andy, if you guys can recycle these, we love to give them to you. Otherwise, they sit by Emmy's desk.
As great as they look on the shelf, we'll let you recycle them. Thank you, everyone. Okay, the second public hearing, which I'll open, is on the so-called proposed CNH subdivision. Casey?
Right, Casey Drayton here to present this CNH subdivision. This is subdivision located along Highway 10 between the airport and the Y area. The applicant is CNH Investments, represented by Professional Consultants Incorporated. We have John Kellogg here with us today, representing the subdivision. Looking at the existing property, we have just under two and a half acres of primarily vacant land. There are two small metal, kind of old shed-type buildings that are located in the center of the property that you can see there. There's one small gravel two-track, kind of going up the hill onto the property. Property does slope from the, I guess it'd be northeast side back towards Highway 10 there with a gentle gradient. It gets a little steeper as you get closer to the road. Here's a few photos just to show that there. The photo, the bigger one on the left is looking back at those metal buildings. Top right would be looking down to Highway 10. You can see the railroad overpass in the very top right corner of it. Just a few other shots to show you just the open grassland nature of this property. Proposed today with the CNH subdivision is a five-lot minor subdivision. Each of these lots will be fairly small, all of them under an acre, some of them closer to three tenths of an acre. All the lots split out of the center of a proposed cul-de-sac that'll provide access to each of these lots. Looking at our zoning and growth policy compliance here, we are located in an area designated for light industrial, commercial-type use, and you can see that's primarily surrounding it as well as part of the comprehensive plan, land use recommendation. The zoning mirrors that with a CI-1 zoning designation. You can see we're buried pretty much in the middle of CI-1 here, so it's all primarily light industrial or commercial uses under the newer pyramid zoning that Missoula County has. So staff has found that the subdivision complies with all the requirements of zoning as well as the comprehensive plan, land use recommendation, and the Missoula County growth policy. Looking at ag and ag water, there's no water rights associated with this property. The nearest agricultural use is located adjacent in a sense, although it's over top and across the railroad grade that cuts across there. We do have some hay production located there. The soils are mapped as farmland of local importance. However, looking at the fact that we don't have any water here, we have a fairly small parcel with an area that's been designated for commercial and light industrial development, surrounding developments. Staff feels that there is not a large impact to any sort of agricultural components on this property. Looking at the local services, as mentioned, we have a new road termed Professional Drive with this application. That'll come in and access each of the lots. As mentioned, it terminates in a cul-de-sac. The road will have a slight grade climbing up off of the highway. The approach should be approved and permitted through Montana Department of Transportation. This road is proposed to be, what are we at here? 26 feet wide within a 60-foot right-of-way. This will also be the location for all our primary utilities to run within the road. In addition to the road, pedestrian facilities are not proposed, required, or anywhere adjacent to this property. It's not anticipated that there'd be a huge need here for pedestrian facilities, given the proximity to kind of the larger transportation corridors that don't have any pedestrian facilities with them. In terms of water and sanitation, we have sanitary sewer, municipal sewer from the city of Missoula available to this property. There's information in the application acknowledging or approving preliminarily that connection to sewer for each of these lots. Each lot is proposed to draw water from wells. Lots one, four, and five are proposed to have individual wells. Lots two and three will utilize a shared well. Not all the wells are located on the properties in which they're on, however, necessary easements have been provided. Looking at solid waste, it'll be managed by Republic Services. No parkland dedication is required or proposed. No impacts to the school district are anticipated with commercial industrial-type development. The property is located within the Missoula Rural Fire District. The applicant has proposed commercial or industrial-grade interior fire sprinklers for all new structures on the property as the chosen plan for fire suppression. Adequate police protection should be available to the subdivision, given its proximity to transportation corridors. Looking at the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat, the subdivision is not in an area impacted by high groundwater. There's no water bodies or riparian areas located in proximity to the subdivision. It's moderately developed in the near proximity. We're not anticipating any major impacts to wildlife or any critical or key wildlife species. Vegetation is largely disturbed grassland. You could describe it as there's some native grasses, some noxious weeds on the property. There is some standard conditions and findings related to noxious weed management and revegetation of the properties. Subdivision doesn't contain any mapped floodplain, nor does it contain any areas designated as steep slopes in excess of 25%. The property is located within the airport influence area. Condition of approval requires navigation easement to be filed to restrict development to a certain height to be approved by the airport authority out there. The subdivision's in the Missoula Air Stagnation Zone. Seeing that it is located within, the road will be paved, as well as any new driveways and parking areas associated with the commercial development. We find that the subdivision complies with the survey requirements, subdivision regulations, review procedures, provisions, easements for utilities, legal and physical access. And with that, staff has recommended that the subdivision be approved based on the findings of fact in the staff report and the conditions found in the staff report. We haven't heard any comments or concerns from the applicant on the conditions at this point in time, but we have John Kellogg here today. I'm sure he can share anything with you, and I'm happy to take any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Kellogg, would you like to come up and share anything you'd like with us?
Thank you, Commissioner Strobeher. For the record, I'm John Kellogg with Professional Consultants. Appreciate Casey's thorough review of the proposal and appreciate your time today. Matt Kavanaugh and Mike Hayes bought this property with the intention of locating their businesses on the property. They're each going to split the difference, one on one side of the road, one on the other. Matt's got a cleaning restoration business and Mike's got a carpet laying business. And they have very specific plans for these relatively small lots. So the couple of items, the location of the access onto Highway 10 is suggested by MDT and actually because as you proceed to the southeast further down the road, the double yellow line splits and becomes a center turn lane as you... double yellow line splits and, and becomes a center turn lane as you go further toward town. And so they suggested that we move that access so that we're not crossing over a double yellow line. And we're in agreement with all the conditions, but I should say that for condition 13, the requirement for a 20-foot width easement on Lot 2 for the benefit of Lot 3, we're probably going to move that sewer service line over onto Lot 3 because there's no reason why it couldn't underlie the, the drainage swale, which is only going to be a foot or so deep. So we likely will not have that 15-foot proposed easement that Casey's recommended widening to 20 feet. With that, we're in agreement with all the proposal recommendations, conditions of approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there is no public here to comment? We'll close the public hearing. Questions from the commission?
So Casey, number 13, then we could put some if language in it to say...
Well, you know, it's written in such a way that it almost does accommodate, I think, what John's talking about here, that, so the easement, I'll just highlight it here in case you're wondering, runs right along here. So they had the sewer line coming out of the center of the cul-de-sac essentially and running on Lot 2 and then stubbing out into the back of Lot 3. So easements under county subregs need to be 20 feet in width. In this case, they showed it as 15 feet, so it either need to be five feet wider or it would need to essentially not be there. So staff wrote this condition in such a way that it shall be shown as 20 feet in width on the final plat, or proof shall be provided to show that the sewer line for Lot 3 has been extended to Lot 3 directly from the right-of-way. So that would mean that the sewer line would actually, instead of running on Lot 2, it would just come up directly into Lot 3 and it would be entirely on its own property that it's there for.
So this would actually provide more flexibility as is if for some reason...
It allows them to do what, what John has mentioned, so, you know, they, they could go either route if for some reason that didn't work. They could keep it where they wanted, they would just have to dedicate five more feet of easement. I think the, the side setback here is 15 feet, so they would lose five feet of developable area with that. So I think the better alternative is getting it directly into Lot 3 and if that can be done, then they shouldn't have an issue with it.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Or a motion?
I would move that CNH subdivision be approved based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in the staff report. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. The CNH subdivision is approved. That was a nail-biter. Okay, anything else today? See none, we will be in recess.